I'll ask Councilman Bob give us a prayer, please.
Father and Lady Jesus, we send you by your power, we thank you for this day, amen. We have never seen before, God bless you, just look down upon us, bless us with your grace and your mercy, Father, yes you know that everything that's done today has been done in your honor. Father, yes you be blessed with the future, so they over and Jesus, Father and Lady pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you Councilman Bob for the invitation. Uh, council members, you had an opportunity to see your meeting minutes. Are there any questions about the meeting minutes from the previous meeting? Not? I ask for most to approve the meeting minutes asked presented to you today. Second, the motion and second to approve the meeting minutes. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Fin the chair eyes have it, motion carries on our board appointments. Uh, Mrs. Ingram couldn't make it tonight, so we'll push that off to the next council mem- council meeting. Um, so we'll add that. And then as of today, we have two vacancies in our parks and recreation board, so if there's anyone that's interested in the parks and recreation board, or if you have any names, please, uh, get those too, so uh, review those candidates.
And what would they, what would they be doing?
Parks and Rec.
Yeah, on that one.
So, the board originally was set up to, dealt with youth baseball, um, had a lot of groups, that was when we first kind of got started with the baseball league. And we pretty much, I think, I need to get me out, we reestablished it, because it used to be one, and then it's not one.
That's great.
But they are, uh, just say advisory board, kind of list the concerns about parks and rec. And now that we have a parks and rec director, we're trying to get it more active, so that way they actually can meet. So, uh, they can come up with suggestions. It's not just about, uh, playing baseball or playing football, uh, it's kind of touching the whole person. So, uh, stuff like we'll get like yoga and, uh, uh, reading, poetry class, whatever, recreational activities for all ages. So, uh, and they'll advise and take, uh, suggestions and kind of be a sounding board for people like that.
How many members you have on there?
Don't get me lying.
You don't know?
At least, I think six or seven, it's on the website, six or seven.
It's on the website?
Yes, it's on the, it's about information page, but it's about six, six or seven, well, we got two, right? Seven, seven, seven people. Did that MC tell someone on the top? Did I ask you?
Yeah.
Any other question about?
Yeah, I see.
Alright. Alright, item number two, I'm gonna take, alright, you still at same status on that, um, on that point, so, uh, no new information on that. Um, oh, item number three, we had had an opportunity to discuss, so I recommend that we continue to put that on, um, uh, uh, put a motion, uh, get a not motion, but, uh, continue to table that, item. Is there a motion to table?
I saw one.
Alright, motion. Uh, so we on the new business, item number one, autism walk. Like the twentieth, twenty twenty four. Chief. Good. They're gonna do the dates to meet there, they're working.
They did.
They did, yes. So they gonna do tape same route, as they normally do, uh, the five tapes, so, they're not gonna walk?
I don't think, I don't think they gonna walk, I don't think they gonna walk on the road. I think she said that they basically gonna walk on the water train.
Okay.
So they not gonna.
Let's go.
When it stop?
The twentieth of April, April twenty. Cause there are most to, uh, approve.
I saw one.
Second, motion and second to approve the autism awareness walk. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, in the chair eyes have it, motion carries. Item number two, on new business, uh, resolution honoring Mr. James Bud Blakeney. Uh, resolution twenty-three dash eighteen, whereas on behalf of our community, we wish to record our deep sorrow in the passing of Mr. James Bud Blakeney. Whereas Mr. James Bud Blakeney was a valuable asset to the city of Aliceville as a former city manager. And whereas Mr. James Bud Blakeney was the executive director of the Gordo Housing Authority. Whereas, and whereas be it resolved that the city of Aliceville recognizes Mr. James Bud Blakeney contribute contributions to our community and to its citizens. Now therefore, we hereby express our deep appreciation for his service to our community and extend to his family our sincere sympathy upon his passing. Adopted on this tenth day of May, two thousand twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion, is there a second? Motion and second to approve the resolution honoring Mr. James Bud Blakeney. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? In the chair, I understand, motion carries. Now we on the council table. Council members, you had an opportunity to review your bills as presented to you today. Are there any questions about the bills that have been presented to you today? Not? I intend a motion to approve the bills as presented? Has been a motion to pay the bills.
I saw one, second, motion to pay the bill.
Alright, that's, there's a motion and a second to pay the bills. Is there any other discussion? We, there's no discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the chair, eyes have it, motion carries. Now on to, uh, departmental reports. We'll start off with our police department.
Mayor and Council, uh, want everybody, uh, just to be aware of our, our current weather that we're having right now. I have some officers out also along with, uh, city department. We have trees, couple of trees down in, uh, areas here in Aliceville as we speak. So, again, uh, keep monitoring the weather, um, for the severity of it. Uh, also, city of Aliceville Police Department, uh, we have, uh, picked up our new, uh, control unit. Any questions, uh, from? Council.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, now we move on to our street department.
Nothing at this time, sir.
Uh,
Other than that, probably we have garbage.
That's, that's, that'd be nice, and that way we, there, there's.
The problem we have with garbage, we, we have a problem dumping. We get the truck filled up and we can't go dump to continue the route. So therefore, we had to get up early in the morning to go to the landfill, dump, and basically start all over again in the same spot.
So they, so they got. So, yes, so they won't let us dump at the evening time as of right now. Hopefully, they're gonna change on the twenty-first, whenever it change though. May first, when it change though. Uh, so as of right now, they can only, uh, just like dump track, and you got one, one good time to dump, and that's it. And then after that, we gotta hold the trash and go through it, so that's not on us. We just can't fill the truck up anymore, and.
What's the reason then? We can't nothing they can?
They don't, they don't have a place to dump.
If they have a place to dump, they don't have the personnel to dump.
To be there to dump.
Right, right. And anyways, so hopefully that'll be resolved soon, but if not.
I think they, they're trying to transition things over for maybe first half, but they telling everybody to, you know, try to, try to call in now that, so you won't have no, I guess, what's the word, no gap in your, gap in service, yeah, so try to start calling in, but when your thing rolled over on maybe first.
We're gonna get a new, new company.
A new company, and then you'll be having garbage cans, garbage dumpster if you want. Reasonable, chief. And if you can do one month, uh, just let them know that you can do three months, they say, if they were gonna work with people.
Quarter of a year. Well, that'd be, that'd be good for us, but, uh, but that, that's what we dealing with, so that's why we have the situation that we have, uh, we dealing with it as best we can. So, that being said, uh, thank you for their report, Chief, uh, Chief John.
Mayor and Council, uh, this month we had twenty-nine calls, uh, two of them will be grass fires, one structural fire, one civil fire. Uh, we have five accidents that we responded to, uh, we have sixteen ambulance calls that we responded to as well this month. Uh, we have four non-emergency calls. Uh, the vehicle situation, uh, there's a, y'all see on your reports, uh, what's going on with the rescue truck, uh, and also the ATV. So I am in the process of looking for another rescue vehicle at this time. We just having to get it, find it, and go look at it, and make sure everything's good on it, and then actually place and get it or practice it.
Hey. You said one hour rescue vehicle?
It's, it's a vehicle where my guys go out and respond to medical calls instead of taking a fire truck or a rescue truck. It's a small vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, thank, uh, Councilwoman Gill.
Um, I don't have anything about council, so I have already been prepared.
That'll work. Um, museum, uh, report on, again, that combines the Chambers having the Dogwood Festival on the
Fifth.
Fifth, the.
Well, the museum thing is the third. About Friday and Saturday.
Yes.
Um, third and fourth is the evening, rain night event, and then the fourth is the Dogwood Festival.
Yes. So, you have any questions or concerns about that, you can reach out to Ms., uh, Catherine Lavender, uh, the Chamber Director. Uh, or if you have questions about the museum, you can ask, go by the museum, or go and talk to Mr. Gillum, um, and get more information about that as well.
Y'all have time to go to the.
The time, the event, so on that Friday, they're gonna do, uh, the, um, movie that evening, right?
That's at the theater.
Right. And then Sat- that's normally at about dot dusk time. Uh, and then on that, on that, uh, next day, that Saturday, we have the stuff going downtown with the street fair, then they're gonna have the people from Ollie, they're gonna come from University of Alabama. And they'll do some stuff, they also have reenactment stuff, um, they're gonna march from the platform at the railroad place back towards town, like you said. Uh, and they're gonna do that, uh, and then throughout the day, they'll have the events going on. And then that night on Saturday, they'll have the USO dance that'll be here, typically that starts at about six or seven o'clock. Uh, and they'll have the live band, then, uh, the do-around, um, so that's the, in a nutshell, that's kind of what's going on.
I think the Dogwood Festival is nine to eight.
Yes.
What?
Dog.
Festival is nine to eight.
Okay. Got you.
Alright, uh, there's no more on the chamber, there's no more on the museum, uh, any unscheduled public, any public comments at this time? Alright, I thought my little right Councilman Wilkins.
Oh, yeah. Uh, spring coming, spring is in. Eclipse, I hope everybody's seen it. Didn't see it, didn't see it, whatever, but, uh, you know, we'll be cutting grass, watch out. Snakes and stuff crawling, girl. I guess we gonna, we gotta, need to get your license, if you gonna cut grass in City of Aliceville commercials, need to get your license. Commercial is seventy-five dollars?
Uh, depending on how much you make, but the baseline is about seventy dollars, seventy-eight dollars, I know.
That's all.
How many things?
Councilman.
Life and care, how many yards you talking about? You know, you got a lot of money, probably, you know, you got, you got more life than it is.
So if you have a business that you got, I don't know, whatever you qualify it as a business, then, I'm not, if I'm cutting my mama's grass and feeling my daddy's grass, and putting my grass, then that's, then that's not going, you know, that, that's kind of, that wouldn't be suffice, but mainly we're talking about people who cut grass for the, for a living. Uh, so, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna go out to somebody that, I'm not, I'm not going out to anybody, but, uh, if it's somebody that cut somebody's grass just for they old, or somebody older, or whatever the case is, we're not gonna listen to that, but if you doing it for a living, right. And that includes folk, you know, some people, anyway, any business, you need to make sure you have your license, that's it, for a business. But, I don't know the, I'll stay focused. So if they're not a business and they just couldn't grab, then that's, that's them, but if it's a business, then they need to have a license.
You know, a lot of the kids, they may be able to still be cutting grass, you know?
That's true, man.
I wouldn't even know.
That's true. That's true. Council. Wild.
Uh, yes, I'd like to, I'd like to come in on, uh, going different route tonight. Uh, on how well the grand reunion was attended this weekend, the Son of Kirk's reunion was well attended. Uh, it brought in, and I know it did, uh, a lot of new faces and new money with it. I see it proper well this weekend. So, our tax base should change. Uh, did peoples here, I know, I saw them, and they, it was on Friday, it was on Saturday, our day, it was on Saturday night, it was on Sunday. And to my new face, I ain't talking local money, new money, they were pleased, they were, they were attending, they were pleased, uh. Any, anytime that new money come in to sit, sit up at this bill, it's a step forward with us for moving forward. You know, so next time, they already set it for twenty-six, oh, we need to make some adjustments or some things, so they're back now, they're back. COVID haven't shut down, but they're back.
The April twenty-sixth.
I, oh, no, oh, they sending it now, oh, but it was twenty-six, twenty-six, well, they are back, and they gonna be back to visit. You know, I don't make a lot of comments and, uh, oh. They went to the city, I know, uh, they, uh, went on the spot, that they went to their home, they went to their old home site where they used to live. But, but the house is gone now, but the land is still there, it grows up, but they still wanna go visit. You know what I'm saying? So they visit that old home site where they used to live. Uh, we couldn't get down all the road where we wanted to go, or place is dead. They just wanted to see the place, you know? But we had, go ahead, from, from Arkansas, uh, Atlanta, we had people from St. Louis, uh, Angeles, Chicago. This is Kimon Navy, trying to get the further, further, they think, oh, you got the further, well, somebody is popular. But it was just out here. We had, uh, our highest age was over two hundred, the one, one, one that team in, and our lowest age is in the, in the sixties and seventies. That, uh, team in, oh. So I want to comment on that and appreciate them for coming back, cause they say, you know, a lot of people gone now, but they still here. So, that's it, so. It was good for the city of Aliceville. Anytime, anybody doing anything in the city of Aliceville is good for the city, because it's new money. I don't care if she marbles or finger her paper, or clean his body, we have new money. Everything is important, when you, when you doing something, it's important, everybody, it's important. There's no small in it. I don't treat it, it, like. And until we, we need to learn that too, until we learn that, and no big one, and no small, that we not, we don't move, we just start learning that. She obviously did bet the same.
Yeah.
You know, whether you walking behind the building, or walking down side of the road, like the one Miss McCartney did the other day, Miss Odin did the other day, Catherine did the other day, all of them, Chief Yar. It's just so, they do get a lot of things from the city of Aliceville, but if we don't see a big old, about five foot long, they don't feel like it's much, but it is. It draws a certain people, and it's just important, it's anybody else. Uh, I'm stopping with that, come on, small, go ahead.
Councilman.
Uh, I wanna go back and, uh, revisit the autism awareness walk. Um, I think the reason why she brought it to the council, because she wanted the, to the use of the pavilion, and then she wanted, you, did you get about the, uh, senior building for the use of the bathroom?
Uh-huh.
So.
She set up.
So that was.
Yeah, she set up.
Okay, great, great. And, um, and possibly, I don't know if it's, it's something that we can look into, uh, in the future. Possibly building a, a outside bathroom, I know Karen has a, Karen has a, uh, restroom outside of their pavilion. So that's possibly something that we can look into in the future, uh, so we won't have to go inside, yeah, go inside utilized building.
That's, that's good, when they set it up, they built the, uh, if you see them white pipes, it's built to get the bathroom. So, uh, if we get a cost factor, we can, we can get some estimates and see how, how it works and go, yeah.
And that, that was, I guess, we'll make sure that it was certified.
No, it's good, okay, that's fine, I, I thought, I apologize, I let him say that, that's good.
And the, and the walk is that they're gonna have raffle, face paint, craft, bouncy house, scissor table, autism awareness merchandise, community resource tables, silence auction, quiet area, uh, and they're gonna have a balloon release following the walk. And they're gonna start, uh, at twelve o'clock, and possibly it's supposed to last from twelve to three. I will come.
Okay.
Okay.
That'll work. Oh, yes, ma'am, that, that's, that's excellent, uh, and like I say, we want to make sure we support, that's Mr. Wild said, all of our events, um, if, uh, community wants us to do a resolution for something, they can come to us and ask, we've already had somebody come to us and ask for a resolution for, uh, Paris Bottom Day, so as soon as they get, um, the information to them, we're gonna do that. Um, I do plan on doing a retroactive resolution for, uh, RJ Kirksey, just as soon as the people get me that information, so that way we can recognize those, uh, those specific groups. Uh, also on Sa- Friday, uh, they had Army Day, uh, Army Road Day, I think. And a group of them got together and went down to the park, and cooked fish and had fun, and reminisced about what happened back in the day. So that was good to see people out and about, uh, in Aliceville, um, on some positive information, it wasn't about it, it wasn't a, wasn't a sad situation. Uh, just some updates, as far as, uh, meeting wise, market encounters for March, May the eighth, May the eighth at four P M. Uh, the council members will be, council members and a few of the residents, uh, are gonna be at a Delta Thrive meeting. And it's a part of the Delta region, the Delta region is, uh, incorporates, uh, Alabama, Mississippi, and, uh, Louisiana, Arkansas, all the way up to Illinois, uh, and a few states in between, and a part of this Delta Thrive, just trying to see how resources can be expended in all, in those areas to enhance the, uh, to enhance those areas. So, Ms. Pamela Tremel will be coming out of West Alabama Regional Commission, so, uh, so that'll be before council meeting, on, not the next council meeting, but the following council meeting, May, May the eighth. On the next council meeting, we're slated to have, uh, someone come in and speak with us from the EPA. Mister, uh, Derek, uh, Derek Dillon, I think is the name, uh, and that's gonna be on the next council meeting, he's gonna come, uh, actually, I'm not council meeting. On April the twenty-second, he's gonna call, so if there's somebody who wants to come with us while, while he does a tour in Aliceville, he's gonna be looking at areas where those, uh, the EPA money can be spent, uh, cause we got the brownfields dollars, uh, that five hundred thousand that we, uh, just, uh, act yes, and now we're trying to get spending it out to those businesses and let them know it's free money to do those stuff, those studies. But he'll be here on the twenty-second, if anybody wants to, uh, to join us, we'll, uh, we'll be here, and if you got information to ask, but, uh, and I'll give it to you, whatever, too. But April twenty-second is the latest coming out of the line. Uh, today, about two hours ago, I got an email about our airport, we're now officially at airport, so we're, we're, uh, legit. So it took a lot of hard work to get back to that status, I think it's been about four or five years since we've been able to do it. Uh, because of, not because of things that we can control, but because of, uh, things go out of our control, we had to find trees to cut, and folks come in, do special work and all that type of stuff. So, this sets us up to try to get some resurfacing dollars from the FAA, uh, and the Department of Transportation, so hopefully we'll be able to do that and make some, uh, positive, and also get some anger money and all kind of other stuff, so. Uh, that was the first step, which is major, and I wanted to make, congratulate Mr. Potts, but he's the de facto, uh, whatever you wanna call it, airport manager, and also was the, yeah, right, right, and Shane Cole, and, uh, Lewis. Uh, so, so they, they're the ones that, that do it. Y'all already heard about the, uh, sanitation issue, um, I'm bringing back a report now on the ambulance on last week, uh, met with the ambulance service, uh, I think it's kind of ambulance service, as well as all the mayors and the county commissioner, uh, county commissioners. Our county commissioner was very, very represented, and we all received our bills for what it's going to be for Aliceville. Uh, as they stated before, it's twenty-nine hundred dollars, uh, but, so I wanna say twenty-nine thou- twenty-nine hundred thirty-two dollars, I think, and some change, but, uh, that's our portion for, based on our population size, so, uh, every month, I'm gonna bring it back to you, we're supposed to meet again in September.
Right.
Alright, uh, we're supposed to meet again in, uh, September and review, uh, but that's, that's what our bill is, is not the six thousand, I think, that we were thinking. It's cut in half, and it's actually twenty-nine hundred, and this to help supplement the ambulance service. That service should start, not this week, but it should start on the fifteenth. They're anticipating that on the fifteenth, that's when that second ambulance will kick in. So are there any questions about that? Uh, last, uh, last thing I got is, again, about thirty minutes ago, uh, we put in, we put in for a lot of grants, sometimes we get them, sometimes we don't. And the one that we don't get, I kind of can get about to the next time it roll around, and then maybe we get it, maybe we don't. But, uh, just received word today that we received another grant in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, uh, redo the road, uh, downtown, the only road that we have paved that's in the city of Aliceville. The, what's kinda road? Yeah. Paul Street, so they're gonna, uh, redo that road, uh, it's some matching money that has to be done, we have, um, we get, I think the state is gonna give us uh, three hundred and fifty thousand, and then we have to come up with a match of up to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for matching, uh, which is done on a, on a scale basis. But long story short, uh, we do have those funds to, um, that we secured just thirty minutes ago, got on the engineer, we called, and told him, so I wanted to make sure I shared that with everybody.
The concrete part?
Yes, it's gonna be concrete, yeah.
That's only on cost three fifty, or seven hundred dollars? Really?
I, I ain't engineer, engineer today, but we're just doing that one section, so it's not, because we paid a lot more than the previous, so we'll just be going from the stop sign in ti- in the center of town, uh, and right there where those cloud beds kind of stop it, where, uh, Tik Tok is, or the old Tik Tok, and then all the way down to the museum, so that's the only section that they're doing. So, but that being said, that's, that's.
Yes, sir, you know, miss cup, uh, two things, I like, one, I would like this, this is funny, like, you know, man. Uh, the government be talking about that, uh, road, Councilman Ball, Councilman Ball, uh, they hadn't set a hall, you know, that, uh, I could come to the kitchen, like, when I cover that maybe, yeah, cover the cover, and when I cover there, it's, we needed now, cause for him to get back with that pipe, and all the way we have, right, so if I want to look at that again, you know, you know, she had, she had missed it before. So, now he's bringing up, you know, like, for the, for the, for the next, yes. Next is all, I forgot about uh, remember special, these specials? Uh uh just having that uh, they had these kids having a fundraiser, Boys and Girls Club. Just having a fundraiser, just coming to therapy. At the, at the center, I, I, I'm just trying to, I'm figuring here, they're gonna fishing, definitely, they racing some extra funds to go on uh field trip. Uh they're trying to go on trip, so they still show up. So asking everyone to enter that, or come by, anticipate, even bring a donation, or. I think those are the phone, I did not hear, but I always having Boys and Girls Club up and they are fishing stuff and. This phone, uh ca- commission, will you read that ticket button?
Um the boys, the boy scout troop two oh five, girls, boy scout and American fundraiser. Fish and shrimp plates, the menu is cat food, shrimp, mac and cheese, vegetable bread, pick up at Aliceville Activity Center, cooking land place. Twenty dollar ticket for fish and shrimp plate. Time is eleven A M to two P M. Saturday, April the thirteenth.
And it's for our children, our kids that are, and to get a trip in. Or it was some extra phone, but everybody would be have some can be supported, you know, what they'll have with money, not everybody can afford it. We just help them out.
Right. Alright, uh on the cover, I'm gonna, I'm gonna venue, if you don't mind, get with uh Mickey Walker and a couple of people who can do those covers. And then that way we can get a estimate of where it'll be, because I don't have no problem with it, but I know. If we do it, I wanna do it right, so paving and everything else, you know, if you, if they gonna drive up from that area, it need to be dry. They need to drive up on the cover and then get on the grass and be wetting, so you see what I'm saying? So it, so whatever it'll be, and then we get estimate, and then we can figure out how much it is and go from there. I mean, that's, that's why I had that way people can come up, come back, but I don't want to just do the cover and then. Don't have the money to do, and that's kind, I think that's what stopped with uh, I forgot about when the last time was. I got a quote for the cover a while back, but they mentioned, hey, you might need to go on and get the driveway too. Because if you don't do it, then there's no point in doing the cover, so now you're gonna be stuck in the yard. So let me get a quote on the whole thing, somebody three people, and then we can look at it and then just like. Figure out if we can do it, go from there, ain't no problem.
We get the cover, we get the cover and that stuff in the, in the ditch, or. You never push the road, cause we not borrowed up, cause you borrow it back here all. You know, you watching the night about the fixing the old town. And I figured might be catching up. That's why I borrowed it up.
Now they should, now, that's a good point. So when I talked to the engineer and I, and I said it off, uh that concrete, if you look at that pitch in the museum, is like that thick. So I explained to him, they trying to take all that concrete out, it's gonna, I mean, that's a lot, that's a lot of concrete that's, that's back up in there. So hopefully they're not gonna take it out, because all, all of it is not cracked. A lot of the concrete, it's sectioned off in those, those spots, but it has some crack like the one that we saw this time. But um hopefully what they can do is use the current concrete as a base and then put that concrete on top. You can't put asphalt on top of concrete, but I'm hoping that you can put concrete with concrete. And then that will cause it not to uh, basically, it's supposed to have a textured look where it's gonna be like rolling on bricks. But it really just gonna be uh, it really just gonna be uh concrete that will roll on, but it's gonna have that brick look for downtown. So that way it kind of got that old fashioned kind of look for downtown, so. Uh that being said, if we remove it, then yeah, we can get whatever we want, front out of it.
Lock it out back there.
While we doing both of them.
While we doing, well, yeah. You have to cover in. It, it, it's just convenience back there, and it is better, it, it's best for everybody.
Right.
So I kind of go all that little roads and everybody's tree, you go around, everybody needs to get back to the back door.
Right.
And then it's a short distance.
And then we put no, no powder on the grass, and then that way the grass. Okay, okay, alright. Thank you, Ken, well, uh that being said, there's nothing else I intend, oh, I'm sorry, Mister uh Board Member. This, this uh commissioner, I'm sorry. I apologize for not recognizing you all, uh that, pardon Rick, I didn't recognize you, I know, I'm sorry. And uh Miss Aldean, yeah, okay, I apologize for not recognizing. Uh that being said, with the turn, thank you, Ken, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.